Third, 2020. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody find a flag, or if we have one, we'll throw one up on the screen. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
Under my own state of America and to the Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
And justice.
For all.
We're so much better at that in person. Okay. So I guess we have to do attendance next?
Yeah.
Roll call this. You're on mute Liz.
So Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Um, Vice Chairman Impampa.
Just keep rolling.
Uh, Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
President.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
And I know that, uh, Member Rappaport will not be joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you Liz. Um, the town of Burlington will be holding this September 3rd, 2020 Planning Board meeting as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
So the meeting will be held remotely via Cisco Webex. It is available at HTTPS townofberlincoln.webs.com backslash townofberlincoln. Um, the meeting number is 1294793802 with the password 2020. The meeting can also be accessed via telephone dialing 6173150704. Uh, with the same access code 1294793802. It's also broadcast on Bcat, um, Government Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon Channel 41, and streamed on Facebook Live and the Bcat. Uh, via the Bcat Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via Webex phone, um, like Facebook Live, Webex Chat, and at email at planningatberlincoln.org during the meeting. All persons to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. Um, we often have a very full agenda and ask that anyone wishing to speak try to keep their comments to the matter at hand and concise. And if any, if at any time the hearing, during the hearing, person or persons speak out of turn, the chairman has the ability to meet that person until properly recognized. If you have any questions during particip- during, um, regarding participation during the meeting, you can call planning staff at 781-270-1645, or again, email at planningatberlincoln.org. Um, tonight, or all, all virtual meetings, all votes will be taken by roll call. Liz will be doing roll call. Welcome back Liz from attorney leave. Um, I'm sure she will get, uh, quicker as the meeting goes on. And then we go into continuances.
Okay, thank you, and welcome back Liz. We're so happy to have you back with us. Before I start, I do think in previous meetings, we had one person do all motions and another person do all seconds, which I thought was smooth and helped things move along. So I'm looking for a volunteer to do all motions. Anyone?
As usual, if nobody else will do it.
Okay, so Paul's going to do all the motions. Who wants to do all the seconds? Come on, that one's easy.
Bill will do seconds.
Okay, Bill, thank you. All right, let's start then. We need a motion to take item 6A out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Item 6A is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change. Fifty-six Middlesex Turnpike Burlets Real T LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter, the planning board meeting September 17th, 2020, as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Second.
Member Larue.
Yes.
Um, Chairman Impampa, Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
And Member Rappaport is not with us.
Madam Chair, that being passed, I make a motion to take item 7G out of order.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman Larue.
Yes.
And Chairman, Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Uh, Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
And Member Rappaport is not with us.
Thank you. Item 7G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, zero Birch Street. James Danaher is the applicant.
So, um, Madam Chair, if I could just have one sentence as to the continuance.
Of course.
So there, it has come up, um, a question about common ownership of these lots during the time that, um, Danahers owned both lots between the mid eighties to the late nineties. Um, and with that comes questions as to the, um, ability to develop this parcel separately. So we're still sorting out, um, with council and the applicant's council, um, just that question, but that's the reason for continuance tonight.
Thank you, Kristin.
Did somebody volunteer to, uh, uh, oh, okay, we're done with that one. Motion to continue this matter as a planning board meeting of September 17th, 2020, as requested by the applicant's attorney.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
That was very dramatic. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Uh, Member Clerk, Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
And Member Rappaport is not with us.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take item 7H out of order.
Second.
Um, Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Um, Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Um, Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
And Member Rappaport is not with us.
Okay, item 7H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, 101 Francis Wyman Road and 3 to 6 Dartmouth Road. General Walker Estates LLC is the applicant.
So Madam Chair, we got no notice the, um, late afternoon. They were doing some plan updates. They're not ready, um, for this meeting, so they asked to continue to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter as a planning board meeting of September 17th, 2020, as requested by the applicant's attorney.
Second.
Um, Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
And Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport is not with us.
As we can, if we know, um, uh, Member Rappaport's not going to be here the whole meeting, we can just make that. Member Rappaport will be absent for this meeting, so you can.
I didn't, I don't.
No, no, I. I'm just telling you, so.
It's just one thing to make sure we're clear for the record.
Just. So for the record, Member Rappaport will not be at this meeting, um, but hopefully at the next. Thanks.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take item 7P out of order.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Member Clerk Raymond says yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Item 7P is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions and Article IV use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to signage submitted by the zoning bylaw review committee.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of October 1st, 2020, as requested by the chair of the sign bylaw review, review committee.
Thank you, looking for a second.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, next we have citizens' time. Anyone wishing to ask a question or make a comment on an item that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now with your name and address. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements. Kristin?
So I'm going to be doing announcements today. So, um, on Monday. Yeah, no problem. On Monday, September 7th, the town, town offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day. The zoning bylaw review committee will be holding a meeting on Wednesday, September 9th at 6 o'clock PM. And short term, the short-term rental zoning bylaw to prohibit short-term rentals. Just a clarification, a yes vote will prohibit short-term rentals. A no vote will keep things the status quo with no regulation.
And I'll, I'll expand on that just a little bit. Um, we had, and we debated putting this in discussion, but wanted to just get the message out quick. Um, we had an email go around yesterday that was vote no on short-term rentals because we don't want them. Whereas we actually put the bylaw in place in order to prohibit them, define and prohibit them. So by voting yes on short-term rentals allows us to prohibit them within zoning in Burlington. So just a clarification that it's on that.
Yes means no.
Yes means no short-term rentals, so. Anyway. That's all we have unless other members have.
Thank you. So we do not have any legal notices, non-approvals, so we're moving on to matters of appointment of. Yes, matters of appointment, and our first matter is. Seven A, yes. Item 7A, sorry about that. Item 7A is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions and Article IV use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to self-storage facilities submitted by Betsy Hughes and David Webb, Town Meeting Members, Precinct 7. So, um, we have discussed this item a couple of times. And I think it's, I think there's been quite a bit of consensus on it. So I'm thinking that, um, this will hopefully be a quick discussion. Again, this article is to ban self-storage facilities in Burlington. It would not affect the current self-storage facilities that already exist. So I am going to quickly poll the board and see if anyone has any additional comments or questions that we have not brought forward from the board first. Please identify yourself if you wish to speak on this matter.
Barbara Ernie.
Please go ahead.
Just, just one quick comment. There is a self-storage, just for everybody's knowledge out there. There is a self-storage, uh, facility that's per- been permitted but not built yet, and that will go forward, I assume.
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying, Ernie. Is there anyone in the listening audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment on this matter before we vote? Okay, seeing no one, I think we are ready to move forward to vote on this article. Do you have a motion?
Uh-huh. Where is it? To see if the town.
To close the public hearing.
You want to wake me up? To see if the town will vote to amend Article II of the town zoning bylaw by adding the following definitions, subsection 2.1, 2.19, point 1.1. In 2.19, 1.1, self-storage facility, a building, a group of buildings consisting of individual self-contained units with interior or exterior access leased by individuals, organizations, or businesses for self-service storage of non-hazardous personal property, goods, products, materials, or objects. And for, to see if the town will vote to amend section 4.2.0 and 4.3.0, use schedule as follows. Do you want me to read all of that?
No, just say as printed, I think is fine.
As printed, sure.
And then a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so, um, let's do closing the public hearing first. We'll just do that roll call, and then we'll do the roll call for the other motion that, that Paul already made.
So, um, Chairman Larue, or do we need to wait for the motion to go through?
No, do the, do the, close the public hearing, and then after that, you're going to have a, a recommend favorably vote. So.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yeah.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
And Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Now I need a motion to recommend.
To, uh, vote on the, um, uh, article.
Favorably, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is item 7B, which is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions and Article IV use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to warehousing, storage, and distribution facilities submitted by the planning board. Kristin, you want to give us a real quick update on this?
Sure, so what this is, this, this kind of came off of when Betsy Hughes wanted to look at self-storage. We have kind of had a long-term, can, just, we don't define wholesale trade, distribution warehouse. We don't address fulfillment centers, distribution, like we see now that's happening. I think we're looking at, um, you know, you're, you're looking at retail space and a little worried that it's going to be taken over, um, from whole, wholly distribution areas. So we wanted to take it, define the terms, and then what we are proposing is, um, for, to, for a distribution facility, um, by special permit only in IG or BT. Uh, in a warehouse is only allowed in BT and prohibited everywhere else. So just when I mentioned before, the, you know, the container ship comes on the dock, and then the truck goes to the warehouse, and then from there it goes to these distribution sets, smaller distribution centers. And what, and then what we did in accessory is where, an accessory use, which is up to 25% of the use of the space, where we are allowing for by special permit only. Warehousing and distribution. Distribution within BG, warehousing is relegated to IG and IH, um, as it is today, so that's actually not changing. And then we're defining storage incidental to a permitted, um, use, which we didn't define before, but, you know, if you have a retail store, you have storage in the back, and that's, that's a by right use. So it's really getting at, as I mentioned before, like if Macy's or Kohl's or some other, they wanted to. Morph a little bit more into e-commerce, are we allowing that use? And I think we're going to see a little bit more of that, but we don't want to see broadly principal uses of just distribution. So that's what this is, and we would recommend that you recommend favorably to town meeting.
Thank you, Kristin. The only other thing I would add is just that the warehousing or, or distribution would have to be, as an incidental use, would have to be related to the primary use at that location. So they'd have to be connected, not just random warehousing. So, um, again, this is something that we have discussed previously, and I think we can probably dispense with it pretty quickly, but I'm first going to ask the board if there's anybody on the board that would like to ask a question or make a comment that has not already been brought forward on this matter. Bill is waving. Yes, Bill? I think you might be on mute, Bill.
There we go. Double mute. How, um, how does this impact the, let's say if we had the, uh, auto parts store downtown that wanted to do some distribution, is that not allowed?
That is, um, it is allowed. By special permit, but on, only if it's allowed in the underlying zoning. So yes, if you, if a town center business wanted to do some distribution, it could, but it, but not warehousing. So if, um. With the, we have different definitions, so where, um. Uh, I'm sorry, no wholesale trade and warehousing in the town center.
So we would call that, we would call the auto parts to wholesale versus distribution.
Right, like the auto parts store, the Burlington Auto Parts, which has now gone out of business, was retail with wholesale trade. As in the back part.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other board members have questions or comments?
No, just this comment, Madam Chair. Uh, I stopped at the auto, auto parts store today to pick something up, and big surprise, it's completely empty, so.
You could have gone to a yoga class, though, I'm told. You should have stopped in. Okay, is there anyone in the listening audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question on this matter before we go to a vote?
Actually, I'd just like to, I'd like Kristin to clarify that again with the downtown, I'm sorry.
Is that Joe?
Yeah, so.
So, so in the town center, wholesale trade is not allowed in the CC or CBD district. A distribution facility principal use is not allowed in the, in the town center. A warehouse is not allowed anywhere except for BT. So warehousing incidental to a principal use is not allowed in the town center. A distribution center is allowed by special permit. And storage incidental to a permitted use, which isn't what you, we would consider the, the auto parts, but, you know, storage, like. You know, if you're Patterson's and you sell ballet stuff, you have storage in the back of ballet stuff. So if that, I don't know if that clarified enough.
Well, so distribution, distribution, so a distribution center wouldn't per se, but distribution. That would be accessory to or ancillary to.
To the principal use.
To the principal use, which would be 25% or 50%.
25.
Well, uh, an accessory use is up to 50, up to 25%. But it, if you have a distribution center accessory to the use, it needs to relate to the use that it's accessory to. And it's not wholesale trade, whereas like Advanced Auto or Auto Parts, you're selling wholesale to not retail, to, to someone. For the distribution, it would be, um, of the same product types, and then just fulfilled for processing either by that group or by another delivery group.
Okay. So. Again, I mean, it's almost a fine line between distribution and. At wholesaling, I mean, other than the fact that there's wholesale involved, right? Is that?
So wholesale trade, we define wholesale trade as an established wholesale trade, is an established primarily engaged in selling merchandise to retailers, industrial, commercial, institutional.
Right.
Construction contracts with professional business users or to other wholesalers, or acting as agents or brokers and buying merchandise for, selling merchandise to such persons or companies. Wholesale trade is not direct resale, retail sale to the customer. So if they're doing that.
So even with the distribution. So even with the distribution center, it's, it's, it's going to have to be strictly to the end user.
It needs to be a retail product. So distribution is a facility where goods are received and are stored for processing, fulfillment, and delivery to customers. The end user.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to make a comment, including the listening audience, on this matter before we go to a vote? Okay, I, no one? Okay. All right, then, I think we're ready to move forward. To close the public hearing. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Kristin, this is Brady. Liz, uh, Liz got kicked out of the meeting for some reason, so I can go ahead and do roll call if you want.
Okay, go ahead, thanks.
All right, Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, next motion.
Madam Chair. Well, the next motion is to recommend unfavorably. Do we have to vote now, since we just voted favorably?
No, we're, we just closed the public hearing, now we have to vote favorably.
Okay.
Madam Chair, my motion to recommend favorably and petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions and Article IV, uh, use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to storage, distribution, warehousing.
Second.
Thank you. Yes.
Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion to take items C and D together for discussion purposes and to vote on them jointly.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino. Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Items seven, item 7C is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions and Article IV use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to ground-mounted solar arrays submitted by Revolution. And item 7D is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article V, dimensional requirements, and Article X, miscellaneous and special regulations, as they pertain to ground-mounted solar arrays submitted by Revolution. Um, again, this is another item that we have discussed in previous meetings. Um, I think we've heard a lot from both the proponents, from the board, and from, um, community members. So I am looking to see if. Uh, well, I'll, I'll let Kristin give a brief description of what we're doing, and then what I'm going to be looking for from board members as well as proponents and listening audience members, any new questions or comments that have not yet been addressed. Um, and I think we can probably then move forward to a vote pretty quickly on this. Kristin, can you give us a very brief summary?
Sure, so, um, they started with an amendment to Article II, um, definitions of accessory uses, Article IV and the use regulations, um, as well as Article V accessory, on accessory uses. And as well, and then Article X, which directly dealt with the solar provision. We have had a lot of conversations back and forth, and I think talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, that the two, four, and five were beyond this, it's kind of reaching too far into accessory use definitions. And where if, in fact, what they're, what they were looking to do is ask for ground-mounted solar to not be prohibited in front and side yards, but instead be allowed by special permit from the planning board, which you see in front of you as the text. To insert ground-mounted solar energy systems in any and all positions shall adhere to all setbacks. Ground-mounted solar energy systems in the front or side yard of the subject property shall be subject to the special permit processes outlined in section 920. So that is, right now, it, ground-mounted solar is prohibited from the front yard. You can have it in the side yard, um, but in the front yard prohibited. And what they are asking is to change from the prohibition to allow by special permit. So what the motion you'll be reading is to withdraw the sections of two, four, and five, and vote favorably or unfavorably, or continue with, uh, section 10.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. Okay, so, um. Before I hand this over for questions from the board, I'm going to see if the proponent has any new information that they need to bring forward that has not been discussed in a previous meeting. Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to the board. Does anyone have any questions on this matter or comments from the board? Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to the board. Does anyone have any questions on this matter or comments from the board?
I guess.
How you doing?
Hi, who's that?
This is Brian Sather with Revolution and Lou Yarren with Revolution.
Okay. Did you have a comment or a question, something new to bring to the table?
Well, we didn't have much of an opportunity last time around, but we just wanted to state that the overarching value that solar brings to property values, that's been stated by a variety of long-term studies, as well as the value of the energy, you know, as opposed to fossil fuels, the actual solar. So there's a variety of studies. We, you know, we were prepared to present that, we didn't know what today brought, so last time around, we were ready to present, but we would be open to any questions that, that you guys have as well.
Okay, thank you.
Or just due process fairness.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for the proponent on this matter? Please identify yourself if you do. Okay, so you know when I'm going to open this up to the listening audience. Are there any people listening in the audience that have a question or a comment that they would like to make on this matter?
Madam Chair, this is Mike. Jen has a comment in the chat that she's got a comment on Facebook to read.
Oh, please go ahead, Jen.
Yes. It's from Carrie Howe. She says, I have absurdly expensive electric bills and get direct sun all day. I would be a perfect candidate for solar, but I won't put them on my roof due to the fact that my roof is brand new. And also, it's a known fact that should there ever be a house fire, it prevents significant damage, challenges for firefighters to break through the roof. Plus, I have a ranch house on Cambridge Street, so there'd be an eyesore and more visible on the roof versus the yard.
Okay. Sorry, what was the name of that commenter, Jen?
Carrie Howe, H-O-W.
Thank you. If Ms. Howe is listening, I want to make sure that she understands that this does not prohibit her from having ground mounted solar in her backyard or in her side yard, only in her front yard. I'm gonna give her a minute now in case she wants to respond further. I'll see if anyone else wants to speak and we'll give her a chance to ask another question in case she wants to comment again after being given that information. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment or ask a question on this matter? Okay, Jen, if you can just check and see if Ms. Howe has any further comment? All right.
She, she does not.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I think.
She wants to know, can you define the side yard?
Can I define side yard?
Define the side yard.
Side yard is from the front face of your house back. Anything from the front of your, plane of the front of your house forward is your front yard to the street.
Okay.
Okay. Let's give her a minute in case she has any further questions. I don't want to rush this and then have her not get all her questions answered, so let's just give that a minute so that she has ample opportunity to ask further questions. And I'll just make a comment while we're waiting. I just want to make sure everyone who is listening understands that the planning board in the town of Burlington is very pro-solar. We want people to use solar, we think it's wonderful. This is specifically only about putting solar in the front yard. Just want to make sure everyone understands that because we definitely support solar and think it's wonderful and we want to encourage it. Does Ms. Howe have any further comments?
Is the Article, Article 13, Madam Chair?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, I'm sorry, what did you say, Paul?
I was wondering if the Article, Article 13 to be read. Under words says ground mounted solar.
To read that, we can just close the public hearing and read the motion.
Oh, she does have one.
Oh, okay.
And could there be pictures or sizes describing the panels?
I'm sorry, what was the question? Could you say that again?
And could there be pictures or sizes describing the panels?
Does she mean specifically? This is not about a specific solar, mounted solar, it's about a bylaw that would allow for people to put solar in their front yard as opposed to in the side or the back, but it's not specific about one one type of solar in terms of its size, dimension, shape, or anything else. Does that help?
So the existing solar bylaw is Article 10, Section 9 in the zoning bylaw, which can be found on the planning board website. That outlines everything about solar, where it can be, the size it can be. And just to reiterate that this is just the question about the front yard that you're looking at now, nothing else will change.
And again, I think as we pointed out, we never would suggest folks doing this except for in a unique circumstance. And we're just asking for the opportunity for Burlington residents to have the opportunity in a, in a very unique situation to have a special permit process. Especially being, you know, we're also a Burlington-based company as well, so just want to throw that out there for you guys as well.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, this is Sherry.
Yes, hi, Sherry.
Thanks, Barbara. Just in response to the other caller, and I know that you'll probably mention it, but your role in this bylaw amendment request is only advisory, so she certainly can speak at town meeting as well.
That's right. Thanks for pointing that out, Sherry. So Ms. Howe, what the board is voting on tonight is whether or not to recommend favorably or unfavorably to town meeting. It will be town meeting's decision ultimately as to whether or not to allow this. So Jen, have we heard anything else from Ms. Howe?
Uh, no, we have not.
Okay. All right. I just want to take my time here because it's harder when she's, because she's typing, I want to make sure we've given her ample opportunity. I think we probably can, but Ms. Howe, if you're listening, if you have, if something else comes up later, you have additional questions or comments. As, as Sherry Ella stated, this is not your final opportunity to speak on this matter. It will be going to town meeting, which you could attend and speak at as well. So now I am looking for a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Abstain, abstain.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
And Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay. So now I think we should take up the motion to withdraw first. I guess, is it, oh, it's together, I'm sorry, we, this is together.
Paul, do you want to make the motion? This is Bill. So this is Bill, I'll make the motion to withdraw without prejudice, the petitions to amend Article 2 definitions and Article 4 Use Regulations and Article 5 Dimensional Requirements to address and define uses pertaining to ground mounted solar arrays and further to recommend unfavorably to the petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 10 Miscellaneous and Special Regulations as they pertain to ground mounted solar arrays.
Mike, I'll second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. All right, our next item is Item 7F. Item 7F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan. Zero Chandler Road, GTH Homes LLC is the applicant.
Barbara, Madam Chair, we have to just, I took that out of order because the Montores waited so long, so I just took it out of order to get, take right after.
So we need to vote to take it out of order?
Yep, so just take it out of order and then we'll go back to G after.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to take Item 7F out of order, please.
So made, Bill.
Second to my mic.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. And then just to repeat, this is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, Zero Chandler Road, GTH Homes LLC is the applicant. Is there someone here from GTH?
Hi, Bob, it's Greg Hickox.
Hi, thanks, Greg, welcome.
Steve Dresser is trying to log on now, he's having a problem, just trying to walk him through it. You think he's done it 1,000 times, he could figure this out, but.
Okay, well, we can, we can probably get started and just give Kristen an opportunity to give us a brief summary while we wait for Steve to get online.
Okay.
Sure, and if Brady wants to pull up the plan, the layout materials plan, that'll be helpful as well. So this is Chandler Road, abutting Mill Pond Conservation. This is four, four or five, anyway, actually, no, it's not four, it's a grouping of lots that they have quite a bit of frontage along Chandler Road. We have expected to see something here. There is a vernal pool on what you see as Lot 4, once you get, once you get the plan up, which does have requirements and distance from the vernal pool, which they are, they cannot do any development. Then, so they, Mr. Hickox and the Conservation Commission have discussed donation of Lot 4 to the town. The Conservation Commission has discussed that, the Conservation Administrator has stated that he's working with Mr. Hickox to try to get the pathway carved out as soon as possible on Lot 4, as we talked about at the last meeting, that it was, well, you know, we want to make sure that there's a pathway created before they really get full throttle with construction, so there's still an access for the neighbors. The Conservation Commission would prefer that that access be on Lot 4, so they can maintain it. They also, so that was one of the issues from the neighborhood. They also, the other things that we need to talk through is there was some discussion of either a vegetated area between the roadway and the neighbors and/or they potentially brought up a fence, so we need to talk through that this evening as to what will work on some of the waiver requests. It was discussed that the two street trees per lot not be waived, and what we have put in the conditions right now is that that is not waived, however, it doesn't need to be within the front yard of these houses, but somehow if, to help create the buffer or bring back a buffer between the residential at, I think it's 30? 30 and this, this development. There's also some comments from the engineering department on pre-treatment before the infiltration system. So we have added a comment based on that, not to define exactly what it is, but for the applicant to work with, to propose an option to be reviewed and approved by the planning director in consultation with the town engineer to make sure it's what they're looking for. And the reason for that is that they want to make sure, especially if this is accepted as a public way, that there's an ability to capture any of the suspended solids before they get into a private drainage system to then have the private property owner maintain. So anyway, I think we're moving in that direction in general, as we see comments coming through town departments, so. Other than that, I mean, they've worked, the applicants have worked with us quite a bit. They came in first with an approval not required plan, which they have enough frontage on Chandler Road, the vernal pool made it tricky and didn't allow for kind of these nicer laid out lots as you see in front of you. So I give the applicant a lot of credit for what they've done so far and how they've addressed the layout of the plan and provided for the donation to the town to enhance conservation. So overall, the items for discussion really just were those two with engineering and then discussing with this board about the screening between the neighbors and this, the new roadway. So with that, I leave it to the applicant and our, the planning board to discuss.
Well, thank you, Kristen. You know, I think I sent you originally, Steve was going to probably try to bring it up, but we always plan regardless, Bob and I, whether the neighbor was affected or not, we're big on landscape. I don't know if you've seen any of our homes, we do a lot of, a lot of trees and vegetation. And the fact that I'm living there, I want it to look beautiful. So I sent Kristen pictures, and I actually sent it to Bruce and Margaret, they live on 30 Chandler. I sent it to them today, what I planned to do for a tree-lined street going all the way left between 30 Chandler and us. I also sent pictures, and I had the lot marked out for them to see where their lot was relative to where the street was going to be. And what's really good, they have a lot of trees in between. So there's still going to be a lot of trees in between that, and then where our property starts, of course, we have to take down to do the street, but we're putting up 25 to 30, nine to 10-foot mature emerald abovites that we buy wholesale. So I don't know if you, Kristen, I think I sent you the pictures, I don't know if you remember seeing those, what the tree-lined street will be. It'll be a lot more attractive than a fence. You know, the fence concerns me because it's a residential neighborhood. You know, you don't, you see fences going into commercial properties, into industrial zones, but this is, this is going to be a beautiful street, and I think it's going to enhance it. I think a fence would be, would not make it look too attractive, and we're really, to be honest, we're opposed to it. So.
I'm pulling up, I'll pull up the, what you sent me.
And I think the example was, I'm down the Cape a lot, and I should have taken better pictures, but there's a neighborhood down there that did beautiful rock wall entrance with, with full emerald abovites, it's just beautiful. And then you can plant cherry trees in between. I think it goes with the theme of this conservation property to make it look. You know, our goal was, nobody from the town asked for the land. Bob and I got together when we started looking at this. We knew, I know other builders that would insist that they could build on that acre and a half five years from now. But we said, we knew if we donated the land and conservation took over the fourth acre, the fourth lot, nobody would ever be able to build on it, it wouldn't be in question. You know, so that's one of the things, we did it too, because we want it protected. Yeah, so, so that was my thing on the fence. The second question we had is on the isolator. I talked to Steve about that, engineering, asked for that.
Greg, I called in.
Oh, okay, Steve, I just addressed the tree-lined street, and Kristen brought up how the engineer department requested the isolator row.
No, they, they didn't like the isolator row, they wanted us to do a storm scepter within that chain. It's, you know, I can't speak for why they don't like it, the isolator row, it's approved by NASTDEP, it meets stormwater management. The only kind of twist on that is if we do the storm scepter that they request, we wouldn't need the isolator row, we have that recommendation from the board ahead. If we're going to insist on the, on the storm scepter based on the engineering comment, we'd have to have both of them in there and revise the plans, but likely we'd, we'd shoot for a modification down the road with the board of health and the planning board to eliminate the isolator row.
So what we, how we drafted the decision is to allow for to move this forward, but allow for myself and the town engineer, Tom Hayes, to work through a solution. And with that, you will, if, if it does change, we have, so you won't have to come back to this board for a change, I'm not sure, with the board of health, but whatever the outcome is, the decision will cover that drainage design.
Okay, appreciate that.
But what we're trying to do is, I mean, we wanted, we want, it's hard for us not to defer to the comments of the engineering department. But what we want to be able to do is work through this, but not, you know, as well as move this forward with the planning board to get you guys into a timeline to.
I think that's more than fair. Thank you.
That makes a lot of sense. So was there any other questions? So, was there any other questions or concerns?
Hi, yes, this is Barbara, sorry, I was talking on mute, so, sorry about that. If we could go back just for a moment to the tree-lined street versus the fence, I'm wondering if the neighbors are here, are present tonight, the ones that you sent the pictures to today?
I do, I can see them on, they're there, I believe.
Hi, can you hear us? This is Bruce Catterett and Margaret Montour.
Hi. Hi Bruce and Margaret, thanks for joining us. We hope to hear what your thoughts are after seeing the, the renderings or the pictures that you saw this afternoon.
So, there's actually a couple of things. First of all, we really want to thank Greg and Steve, and Stephen for like, just, just hopefully being good neighbors, and working so well with us, and sending us information and talking, and we kind of stood out in the woods a few times and talked. And we're actually not looking for a fence. I think, you know, that's not something that we're looking for between our land and theirs, and appreciate the providing, going in to make a nice fence there. We do still have, have one concern, and Greg took the pictures and sent them both to you and to us, of some of the hardwood trees. We do have a number of hardwood trees that are on our side of the property line, that are, you know, we're talking like 30, 30-plus foot trees, that have shaded our land all the time we've lived here. When we were kind of at the back of the lot, and talking a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that Steve pointed out, is that when they start coming in and sort of leveling the land, getting ready to put the road in, you know, the trees are on our land, but the roots go everywhere, and there's no guarantee that the roots aren't going to get taken out, and then we're going to lose a good number of those trees. So, we're kind of hoping that, you know, there's some, I don't, I don't, you can't guarantee these trees, but we're really looking at shade trees that are sort of still in that area, as well as the, and we agree that, as well as the abreviate, which is a great idea, and we appreciate that. And like I say, that's more than sufficient for us. We, as the abutters, are not looking for a fence. Is the point sort of, I mean, it's, it's a tough, but it's, it's the...
Can I jump in here Bruce? It's Greg Hickox.
Go ahead.
One of the things, so I think when Steve and I were walking the lot, and it probably was my mistake, I didn't realize the street was going to be 10 feet from the stakeout lot. So, I think we're talking about roots that were really close to our lot line now. You know, so they are, the lot line is 10 feet from where the, from where the street's going to go, and the trees behind that. I, I think Bruce is a good neighbor, if we have some big trees in the back that get affected by this, we put up what's called, in this case, what they're called bushy abrevites, right? They grow 30 to 35, they grow five feet a year, three to five feet a year. If we lose some big shaded trees back there, we'll be more than happy to put four, or five, or six back there again. We are a lot of butts to the back of the thing, but, you know, I think we'll have to cut it out together as neighbors and see how it looks, but if I throw some of those on the back end, we use those because those are beautiful shade providers, they grow so fast. But I think you're going to, after I walked it again, I saw it, there is a lot of trees on your and Margaret's property, that are still going to stay a lot of them. And like I told you, if you have troublesome trees, we'd be more than happy to take those out while I go.
And we're really appreciative of that.
I mean, no, I mean, it's...
Good to work with.
Yeah, thank you. And so, I think, I think we won't know until we take, we take that street out, and look at the situation Bruce, and if we need some of the abrevites, everybody here is my witness, I can put five or six of the bushy ones back there. Bob and I, Bob's a nicer guy than me, I haven't met him yet, so. We take a lot of pride in what we do. If you, if you ever looked at some of the houses we build in Burlington, you know, they're full of detail, they're, I think they're raising the property values a lot in Burlington, that's all I'm going to say, but...
Thank you, Mr. Hickox.
I don't see it being a problem.
I want to interject a bit here. First of all, I, I think it's wonderful to see these neighbors working so well together, and I wish we saw that more often. It's great to see you all talking and working things out. And it sounds like Bruce and Margaret are satisfied with the landscape plan that you have put forward, Mr. Hickox. May I suggest that we maybe just put something in the decision that says that you'll revisit this tree issue, say, one year after the construction is complete, because it would take some time for you to know whether or not the trees were affected, and then the two of you can revisit it at that point. You probably won't need us, but if for some reason you do, we'd be happy to get involved, but it sounds like that you all can work very well together, and I think that would be a reasonable way to proceed. Does everyone feel comfortable with that?
I actually think it's a good idea, I'd be comfortable doing that.
We, we, we're in perfect agreement with that. I think it'll, it's a great way to sort of go forward with this. And let me just, finally, we really do appreciate Greg's, you know, offer to help us with the problematic tree we have, because some of them, you know, it's, this land is just for so many years, you know, some of them are really good, and some of them are kind of iffy.
I have some of those iffy trees in my own yard, so I understand. Okay, thank you. So, let me take a minute here, and we've heard from at least one neighbor, we're going to come back and make sure there aren't any other neighbors that want to speak, but I'd like to see if our board members have any questions or comments at this time. So, I'm actually going to go through the list, because this is a bigger project. So, Vice Chairman Npemba, did you have any comments or questions?
Just one comment, it's, it's very refreshing to see these guys all working with each other like that. I love that. Thank you, thank you, both sides.
I agree, thank you, girl. Member Clerk Raymond, did you have anything you wish to add?
No, I just second Joe's comments.
Okay, very good. Member Cavino?
No, I would just add a third second to Joe's comments, and wish all our subdivision discussions would go as well, thank you.
Wouldn't that be nice. Member Gaffney?
No comments, thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Españo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Initially, before we started, I had in my notes here that I did want to see some type of fence, because they are losing a lot of trees and privacy, but as long as Bruce and Margaret are comfortable with the plan, and we have that in the decision, then I'm comfortable too. So, if they're happy, I'm happy, I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other neighbors present that would like to comment or ask a question on this matter? No.
Barbara, hey, it's Bruce Maury.
Hello. Bruce, hi, please go ahead.
Hi Barbara, thank you, and to the rest of the Planning Board members, and certainly to the proponent and other neighbors. Yeah, I just wanted to comment, Greg had mentioned last week regarding the path and access to the reservoir or the conservation area. He suggested I reach out to John, and he's from the Conservation, I've actually had a conversation with him, he is an individual who's going to begin staking out the proposed access path over the next week or so, so we've been in contact, so I just wanted to commend Greg for heading that up, and allowing basically the Conservation Commission to begin to do that, begin to do that research and planning prior to any construction starting, because obviously, when construction starts, all bets are off, because that's exactly where the access is now, that entire, basically the entire area that the, that they proposed development covers. So, just wanted, just to shout out to Greg and Steve for their help in coordinating, coordinating and allowing the Conservation Commission to at least begin to map it out again. It's a longer process, I think, because it's, it's near the vernal pools, and I'm looking at the screen, near the Lot 4 area, so they're going to have to be careful where to put that access, but I'm optimistic that, that we'll get a comparable solution and access to that beautiful area that we currently have access to, that will now be the new three-lot project. So, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you Bruce.
Thank you Bruce.
Is there anyone else in the listening audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment? And that includes Bruce and Margaret, if you had another question or any other comments you wanted to make.
Okay.
Hello, this is, may I ask a quick question?
I'm sorry.
This is Nancy Joyce, this is Nancy Joyce. I live at 18 Chandler Road.
Okay.
And I just wanted to follow up with a question, for lots one through three, do those meet the size requirement for the zoning district? I just wanted to confirm that that was what was proposed. Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you.
That was my only question, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, so...
Are you ready to close the public hearing?
I just wanted to make sure that we're all in agreement in terms of the drainage and the access in the street.
Sure.
So... Is that, is that okay with everyone? If we proceed with what Engineering suggested?
So, the condition I have drafted is the applicant shall incorporate a stormwater BMP pre-treatment in the roadway prior to entering the infiltration system on the subject, on private property, following the Engineering Department comments. The final design shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Director in consultation with the Town Engineer prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay, all right, and the applicant is understanding that and satisfied with that, correct?
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, yeah, we'll work it out. I wasn't, in my mind, we weren't going to put it in the roadway, because the drainage all goes south, we were going to put it in an easement, but we'll work it out.
I can, I can change it to roadway slash, you know, and/or easement.
It's similar size.
So, I'll work on that.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think we are ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, sorry, Madam Chair, this is Ernie, one procedural question for Kristen, maybe, do we have to state on the plan that this subdivision is for three lots and three lots only?
Well, it is a four-lot subdivision technically, because the fourth lot is there.
Um, Ernie, we have a note...
You know where I'm coming from.
So, we have...
Three buildable lots?
Yep.
Three, three lots to be built upon?
So, to book, to the question, we have to add a note, which states the application is for a creation of three additional building lots for a total of four lots. No further division of lots are prohibited without a proper submittal. So, to your question, and why I know you're, why you're asking it, we do have, just so they write, that it's three building lots and one lot to be donated.
On the, on the plan, not just in the narrative. Okay, thank you.
Yes, on the plan.
All set, Barbara, all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
So, may I? Seconded.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, you're, you're at the subdivision?
You ready for the motion, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, two people talking at once, and I didn't hear anybody. Go ahead, Paul.
Pursuant to Section 2.5 of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81-H, the Planning Board hereby considers following waivers requested by the applicant from the subdivision rules and regulations for the plan entitled Mill Pond Estates in Burlington, Mass, submitted by GTH Homes LLC on May 19, 2020, said plans prepared by Dresser, Williams, and Way dated May 14, 2020, and revised to July 22, 2020, consisting of nine sheets. Is there anything you want to add to that, Madam Chair?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's it.
I think that's great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
So, at the, you have like, three more. So, at the bottom of page 13, you have another motion pursuant to Section 2.4.
Is that pursuant to Section 2.4 of the Planning Board?
Yep, it's a subdivision, lots of motions.
Pursuant to Section 2.4 of the Planning Board Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Planning Board hereby finds the definitive subdivision plan application submitted by GTH Homes LLC for the creation of three additional building lots for a total of four single-family dwelling lots on Chandler Road to be a complete and proper submission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, one more motion to approve.
To approve the definitive subdivision plan entitled Mill Pond Estates in Burlington, Mass, submitted by GTH Homes LLC on May 19, 2020, prepared by Commonwealth Engineering dated May 14, 2020, and revised to July 22, 2020, consisting of nine sheets to be revised as conditioned herein, reflecting the creation of three additional building lots for a total of four single-family dwelling lots, subject to following terms, revisions, and conditions as printed.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We look forward to seeing this develop. I think it's going to be a very pretty neighborhood.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we are moving on. That was taken out of order, so now we're moving back to Item 7E on our agenda, which is a continued public hearing application for approval of a site plan, 26 Beacon Street, First Patriot Corporation is the applicant. So, who do we have here from First Patriot?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Charles Myhouse with Brickpoint Properties, representing First Patriot Corporation. I'm joined again tonight by Colleen McAnesby, the Property Manager at Beacon Village, and I'm a head of Howardstein Hudson.
Thanks, welcome, everyone. Listen, do you want to give us a very brief summary on this, and then we'll have the applicant take a quick turn?
Sure, and I don't know if anyone wants to weigh in on the site walk. So, the application, which they can go through, it's to add a enclosed building with the dumpster compactors completely inside. Right now, they're just on the ground, enclosed in a fence, a chain link fence in the back corner. So, they'll be completely enclosed. The questions that we've received from neighbors are regarding noise, smell, and critters. We had the site walk on Tuesday, I think the noise was a lot less than all of us potentially anticipated for a compactor, but it will be fully enclosed. We did ask them if they can insulate the building a little bit more for additional noise attenuation, as well as for the, oh, for, for smells, it's fully enclosed, they're really, you open like a chute, and then everything goes in, it's not open to the air at all, other than just putting it, putting trash down the chute. There was a question that came up at the site walk about the doors themselves that you open and close, are they metal doors, make sure they're not clanging around. They, Brickpoint mentioned there, they do have a pest control plan around their whole site, but again, this being fully enclosed, they have a lot more control. The dumpster itself is taken fully away, so it's one full one leaves the site, a new empty one comes in, they're not, it's not like a dumpster where you pick it up and shake it and bang it down. We did talk about at the site walk, some of the vegetation along the front of the site that is changing because of the way in which they need to place this, and have the trash truck be able to turn around, so we're looking for them to replicate some vegetation out in the front island, and toward the front of the site that we are losing with the reconfiguration. And the last thing that we talked about during the site walk was, there's a proposal, so if the site's rectangle, the front being at Beacon Street, and then the back two corners, one has... One has that kind of area where they have the containers, where they put maintenance items and other items to be recycled. And then there's on the opposite corner is where the compactors are now. What we talked about in the site walk was to add, instead of kind of an open fence, open air area with the, the containers to create more of a kind of garage with garage door kind of situation that would, as mentioned by Brickpoint, would be easier for them and also more visually pleasing, I think, and less sound for, for the neighbors. So, that was something that they obviously have a design now, but what I have said in this decision is obviously conditioned, the front, the front building that they have proposed, but in the back area, that the planning board is not approving the open air fence containers and is looking for the applicant to come forward in kind of a phase two of this with some sort of building, enclosed kind of garage building for those items that are now in the back. I don't know if anyone else has comments from the site walk. I know a number of members were able to make it, so. Encourage you to weigh in.
Thank you, Kristen. Any other members that wanted to make comments regarding the site walk? Please check in.
Yeah, this is Bill, if I can say something. So, I went on the site walk and thanks for the folks that hosted that. One thing that you saw me take a picture of was at the compactors that it was, when I went there, I would have thought the place would have been immaculate, right? To show us that the trash compactors around it were, there's no trash around it, but, you know, just when I looked in the gate of the fence, there was trash around the compactors. So, I said to myself, so what people are doing now is they put the trash in the doors of the compactor, right, with the fence. So, I kind of pictured, okay, how's that going to work with the other one? So, if they drop something or something gets blown away or whatever, you're going to have remnants trash. You're not going to have a fence around it this time. It's just going to be, it's going to be there. Now, it's going to be the front facing Beacon Street next to the neighbor. So, I'm wondering, is there some way to, 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 where the, where the door is, where they have access to that? Is there a way to put something around there so the material that's dropped inadvertently forgotten or something like that, is a way that that doesn't start to, to creep out from, from that, from that area? The only other thing is the applicant mentioned that there were two other apartment, I didn't get to go to them, but I did a Google map of them. And both of those apartment complexes had the trash compactors way in the back. Through the street, right in the back corner of, of complexes where this one is currently now. So, I also learned that there's, there's no time limit on the doors, so people can go there anytime, day and night, and the compactors will go every third. So, there's a couple of criticisms that I still have with regard to that walk and just my general sense of that is that, that the compactors probably belong right in the back there. If they can, you know, want to put a building around there to make it nicer, that's fine, but that's what I got out of that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I address a couple of those comments?
I can't tell who's speaking, so yes, you should address the comments, but please let us know who is talking.
Uh, Charles Myhuck.
I mean, I knew, I thought she was saying, get off the phone, that's playing, but then when she popped up and.
We have a phone call going somewhere.
So, call-in users, many call-in users are not muted.
Okay. So, call-in users, I think, are muted now. Can we, can you start your response over? Because I don't think any of us really caught what you were saying.
Of course, Madam Chair, Charles Myhuck with Brickpoint Properties, addressing just a couple of the comments that, that member Gaffney had. First, the walkway that the tenants approached the doors to the compactors that they use, not the front door of the building that stays closed, the big garage door, but the doors they open and close to put their trash in. That is a raised walkway, so it has a 42-inch tall guardrail around it with spindles. It's not a full fence by any means, but any debris dropped on the ground there would presumably, to a great extent, stay on that, in that area. The other thing I want to remind everybody is that, you know, this property is a rental property for us. And as such, if we're going to put a building at our front entrance and put our trash in it, we're going to keep it as neat as we can because the first impression of anybody driving by or entering that property is going to be that building. As much as our leasing office is next door, I imagine some people are going to mistake it for our leasing office potentially. So, we're going to monitor that building very closely and keep up with it. And, and, and lastly, the fact that it serves three functions. It's not just a matter of we want to move our compactors up there. It's the largest open portion on the site. It allows us to monitor better, monitor it better. It allows us to also create the covered bus shelter and then the package room as well. So, it's a, it's a three-fold for us. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that wanted to make a comment specifically on the site walk? And then I'm going to give you all a chance to comment on the whole thing in a minute. Anything about, specifically about the site walk?
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. I do have a comment on the site walk. It was, it was interesting to see that the trucks that service these dumpsters, that remove them and replace them, are only going to have to, are only going to be in that very small area. In other words, they can pull in to the site, back in, and then go out to the separate driveway, which is in front of the building, which keeps them from driving all the way through the site and around the site. I, I think that's a plus, actually. Thank you.
I agree with you, Ernie. Okay, anyone else? All right, let's see if board member does sort of open it up to any questions regarding this, this proposal for the board members. And I'm going to, again, this is a bigger one. We haven't discussed it as much, so I'm going to go through the list. Joe and Pemba, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, Paul Raymond.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Ernie, Covino?
Uh, most of my questions were answered on the site walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill Gaffney.
He's muted, Bill.
So long, and I can't tell if it's the one or.
Okay, someone who's on the phone needs to unmute themselves, and Bill Gaffney needs to unmute himself. Go ahead. Yes, we can now.
It sounds like there's no background now. So, yeah, I would say just in general, my sense of this is that you've, you're going to have this place with trash and recycling right next to a neighbor, 50 feet away. They've never had that there. They've had a basketball court there. This is kind of the second applicant that I've seen fairly recently that's putting trash containers right next to the residence that's adjacent to the property. So, when I see, look at this building with the compactors that are going to be going, they can go anytime they want. If you've got the excess trash and if there's going to be a fence instead of spindles, if you can close it off, just so that trash, there's going to be remnants there. And I understand you're going to try to keep it nice, but again, that's, that's the potential to get over there and blow around like I actually saw on the site when I was there. I, I think it's with the trucks going in and out to get them every 10 days. Again, the neighbor who I went, you know, when I was going to boil the pills when I'm not here, I think of if I was the neighbor, I've, I've, I never had, you know, trucks pulling in and out to take these trash compactors in there. So, I, I think that's really a disservice to the next door neighbor to have it put there. I think it's going to be inconvenienced and, you know, I, I think it's something that really, if you're going to have something like that nice and tight and built up like that, I say, keep it in the back where it was because now you're really, you're imposing on the neighbor and whether they know it or not, and they're not going to talk about it. I think if I was there, I, I think I would, I would have some issues with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Have we heard, Kristen, have we heard anything from the neighbor or are they present?
Received some emails, and I know Brady just talked, spoke with one neighbor, not the one right next door. And as I mentioned, it was sound critters and smells that were of concern.
Okay, well, we'll check and see if they're, a little later, I just wanted.
Yeah, maybe with the, with the, when you're going to, you know, I'm just one person on this, but if you're going to have these trucks coming in and out every 10 days, is there a time you can do it so it's not 5:00 in the morning that these usually come, right? And then when it's usually, you'd say after 7:00 or 8:00, they usually back it off and they usually get there by 5:00 again. So, you know, just the way we've seen over many years how this stuff happens, I think if we can avoid that altogether and have the same thing go on that you have them in the back of the, of the facility, I think that really, you know, keeps that, that neighbor.
One stick in the mud, saying to have it in the back of the facility, not the front.
Someone is on the phone. Whoever's speaking, could you identify yourself, please? Okay, well, we'll, we'll turn it over to the audience in just a couple of minutes, but let's continue and see. Member Espo, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, thank you to the, the folks that did the walkthrough. It was very, very informative and it was great to see the, actually see the physically, the, the site. I like the plan as constituted. I like the noise from the compactors wasn't as much as I thought it would be. I do like the idea of where it is. I like that the packages will be under control. It sounds like they have a cool system that they have researched and they're going to have. And I like that trucks won't be driving all the way through the, the site all the time. One thing I do am in favor of completely, and it's been mentioned, is just that other structure with the, for storage. I think we, I would really like to see it as a condition with a time limit on it to make sure that gets done, so it doesn't get left behind the wayside. I do not like those, those storage containers in the back. They're very unsightly. And I think that getting that building back there for storage would not only look better, but help them a lot operationally. So, that's, all right, Madam Chair, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, I have a couple of comments too. I agree with Mike that those storage containers in the back are very unsightly, and I'm very pleased that the property manager has agreed to build a building with a garage doors so that it will be contained and much more attractive looking. I agree with Mike that we need to put a time limit on that, and I'm going to suggest one year. I think that gives enough time for them to come up with a plan and implement it. I share Bill's concerns about disruption to the neighbors next door. I'm hoping that we'll hear from them in a few minutes, but I do think that we should put some sort of time limit on when trucks are allowed to come and remove those compactors. We should definitely put hours when they're allowed to do that and not allowed to do that. But I also see some other benefits to this. I do think it's better to have it completely enclosed. I, I'm glad that we're going to have the children's bus stop there, and I like the idea that we don't have delivery trucks as much traveling all the way through the site. Just when I was there, when I was walking to my car after our meeting, I saw several children playing on the, in the woods to one side and, and the grass on the other side and running back and forth across the driveway. And I definitely think there's a benefit to not having as much truck traffic going along that ring road. So, in general, I think that, I see there are concerns, but I think we can deal with them, and I, I think we can move forward with this if we can find a way to deal with those concerns. So, with that having been said, I would like to see if there are any people in the listening audience, especially neighbors, who have any questions or comments on this issue.
Madam Chair, this is Ernie. Can I just ask Mr. Myhuck a question first?
Of course.
And Charlie, Charles, would it be possible for you to swap another buildings? In other words, leave, put the dumpsters in the back in a building and make this your storage, bus stop, and parcel drop-off building? Yeah, we're, that would probably be less offensive to the neighbors. Have you thought about that at all?
Um, uh, in all honesty, we, we throw a lot of things at the wall when we talk about our properties and what we can do on them. In this instance, though, of course, that still leaves the garbage trucks traveling around the property, which is one of the other incentives for us to get this out of there. So.
Okay.
No, and, um, well, I can, can I come back to comment on Mr. Larue's comments?
Yes.
At the end.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, in terms of the timeline stipulation on the building, I understand that. I heard it on the site walk, and I understand, and I completely understand it. Knowing how we work and how projects move forward, I would request that a year might be a little tight, believe it or not. And then that the, the timeline termination be a submission for a site plan application or, or something of that, not the actual construction of the building because obviously we can't control approvals.
Would you feel more comfortable with 18 months?
I think we'd prefer two years if we could, but if 18 months was what we had, we would.
So, we have, we have it conditioned, actually, I, I just drafted the condition to be of the, a submission for filing within 18 months. I mean, you can do a submission for 12, but not full construction to be completed within.
Filing within 18 months would be acceptable.
So, Kristen, it's my understanding, though, that the current state back there is, cannot be allowed to continue. Am I correct in that understanding?
So, what we want to be clear about is that we're not approving what's shown on the plan, and we're approving the plan. What we need to be clear about is we're approving the plan, approving what you have up front. We're not approving what they have proposed with the containers and the fence, and they need to come up with a solution within a year, a year and a half. And then obviously move forward with constructing that.
Okay, I would like you, I would like the property managers to come up with an interim solution between now and then because what's there right now is unsightly and unacceptable.
The fenced enclosure around the containers.
And the fact that the containers are spilling out into the, the drive around it. It wasn't even contained.
Yes, that, that, that day, the truck literally just dropped off that morning, and our guys were there right after you all putting them back in the units. But of course, once we have a storage building, they're going to go right into the storage building. The problem right now we're running into, and Colleen can speak to this, is that when we order appliances, what we found is Lowe's and Home Depot, they're all backordered. So, we can't even get enough to turn over an apartment when we need to replace appliances. So, what happened was we actually placed a Home Depot order and a Lowe's order, and one came in unexpectedly, a little ahead of schedule. But, Colleen can speak to that more, I think, specifically.
Well, we, the appliances that were delivered that day were delivered and our staff delivered them to each and apartment that very same day. The, the, to put them in that spot, containers are.
I, I think we're listening, Colleen, it's kind of going in and out.
Right.
Sorry. I have a question.
Containers, but the apartment need.
Colleen, you're breaking up.
Yeah, not your fault, Colleen, but we can't hear you. So, I have a question. Is there some way for you to make that fencing look better? It actually, I mean, it looked pretty bad. Now, even if I took away all of the boxes that were outside the fencing, that I, it seems like you could come up with another kind, form of fencing that doesn't look like it's about to fall over and actually does a better job screening what's behind it. Is that possible?
Sure, we can absolutely look at the fencing on that site. I, I don't believe that fencing looks like it's about to fall over, but I'll go and I'll double check that. The boxes were an anomaly. We do get deliveries back there, and the delivery truck driver doesn't have access to the storage containers, obviously. And so, we have to rally our staff out of what they're doing to go meet the truck when it arrives unexpectedly, but they were a little behind on the day.
I'd like you to take a look at, at finding a way to make that look more orderly, at the very least, in the interim. Okay, so are there neighbors or other people in the listening audience that would like to make comments or ask questions on this matter?
So, Jen mentioned that there was someone on Facebook that had a question.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Jen. Let's go ahead.
Yes, I have Helen Donato. She is the neighbor next to the village. And she says, when the, the noise when the trucks come is excessive.
Is this a neighbor that is close to where the trucks are now, where, where the compactors are now, or where their compactors are going to be in the future? that is close to where the trucks are now, where, where the compactors are now, or where their compactors are going to be in the future? Sorry, I don't know that, Jen. We'll have to give her a chance to answer. Um, and along that vein, while we're waiting for her to answer, I do think that we need to put time limits on when those trucks can come and remove the compactors and deliver the new ones, or the empty ones, should say.
We drafted for a, a sign to be added to make sure it's, um, between the hours of 7 and 7. If the, uh, applicant wants to have a more restrictive timeline, uh, we're open to suggesting that.
Uh, Madam Chair, Charles Myhuck, I did receive a text from Colleen since her, her, uh,
Oh, okay.
connection broke up. She said the trucks usually come around 8:30, um, but certainly a 7 to 7 timeline, we will, uh, put that onto our vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Jen, have you heard back from the Facebook commenter?
Yes. She is in the front, white house next to the basket, basketball court.
Oh, okay, the most, the, the closest neighbor. Okay, this is who we want to hear from. So she's saying that when the trucks arrive now, they're very loud?
You can hear the trucks crashing.
Okay, so now I'm asking the property management people, what trucks would this neighbor be hearing in her current location? Because I thought the trucks were going to the back of the property for for emptying the trash.
Yeah, um, but, um, Madam Chair, Charles Myhuck, again, uh, yeah, no, there aren't any trucks up there doing anything with trash certainly, and I don't know what other trucks would be up there besides the ones that are just pulling onto the property. I mean, you can saw the activity that goes on up there, but nothing on that property over there. So, I'm afraid I don't have an answer.
Okay. Um, I wonder if there's some way we could ask this, um, this neighbor to dial in? Is it possible for us to ask her to do that, Jen? So that we could
I, yeah. Um, can someone give me the number?
Yeah, hold on a second. The number.
Jen, it's 617-315-0704. And the access code is 129-479-3802.
I'm sorry, say that access code.
And, and if this is unsuccessful, I think we probably should continue this matter. I think we should try to get this neighbor on li- on the line and get her input. If we can't do that, I would suggest to my board members that we should continue this matter so that we can get her input. Someone is speaking, and I'm not sure if they're speaking to us or not, so if you are, please identify yourself.
I mean, keep it black.
Okay, is there someone who wanted to speak on this matter? Please identify yourself with your name and address. Okay, then, um, Jen, have you heard back from the woman on, on Facebook if she wants to dial in or she would prefer not to?
Um, I have not heard
Hello?
whether she can call.
Think someone just may have called in. To the person who just said hello. Hi, could you give us your name and address, please?
This is Helen Donato. I'm at 20 Beacon Street.
Hi, thank you for calling in.
Not a problem. What we hear is when the trucks come to take away the trash, there is a horrendous loud crash. And you hear it through my whole house, and I know I'm not at those trash compactors right now.
Okay, so is that when the dumpster is dumped? That's when you hear the crash?
It must be, yeah.
Okay.
You hear this loud crash, and it's early in, I mean, it's relatively early. It's not 6:00 in the morning, but it's in the morning. So I know that's what it is.
Okay. So let me ask the property manager a couple of questions. Number one, is it standard practice that this is happening at 6 o'clock in the morning? And number two, could you explain?
No, no, it's not 6:00 in the morning. It's later in the morning. It's, I mean, it's 8:00, I said it's not 6:00. It's like 8:00, 8:30, but you can't, you cannot miss the noise.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood you. Thank you for clarifying. Um, it's my understanding, and I'd like the, the property manager to explain this a little bit, that this is a different process, that the dumpsters will not be dumped out. So if, if, um, the property manager could jump in and explain the difference between these two processes, and that would be helpful, I think.
Okay, sure. I mean, I'm just worried about more noise. There's already a ton of noise there.
Right, right, I understand. So if we could just let the property manager explain the difference between these two processes? I don't know if that will relieve your concerns or not, but let's hear from them.
This is, this is Colleen Mackenessky, the property manager. I was on the, um, video and you had trouble hearing me. I don't know if you are able to hear me now on the telephone?
We can. Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. And I'm, I'm real sorry, but the private, when, at the time that I logged in, I didn't hear what the neighbor, um, all I heard that her say was a loud noise.
What the neighbor is, is relating to us is that when the trucks currently come now and empty the dumpsters in the back of the property, it is so loud that she hears it all the way up front at her property. So therefore, of course, she is concerned that when the trucks are much closer to her, that the noise is going to be much worse. So could you explain the difference between what you have now and what is proposed? And what the impact on n- noise would be?
So currently, the containers that are in the back of the property are corralled by a fenced area. There's a recycling container and a trash container. Um, with the proposed building is gonna be, um, will be, and it, the, the compactors will be inside of the building. Um, I'm not sure what, what the type of, no, I've, I've heard
When the trucks come and empty it, at that time, you said they usually come every 10 days. The actual time they're being emptied is when the noise is loud, is my understanding.
Okay, and is, I, I've heard them be, um, picked up before. Is the sound that she's talking about, is that when the, um, the truck comes, when they put it on their lift? Is that the sound that she's talking about?
I think what she's talking about, if I understand correctly, is when the truck comes and empties those dumpsters. When we were on the site, is that I think what you said is that currently they lift them up and dump them out into the truck. That's very, very loud. You said that would
They take, they take, they actually take the containers off property.
They will now? They will in the future, or they do now?
They do now. They, when they come to the property, they take the containers with them and they bring it to a place where they are emptied.
So that will be exactly the same as the current process will be the same, only it will be moving?
They, yes, they will, they will continue to, when they come to collect the containers, they will take them off property and then they will return with an empty container about an hour later.
So we should expect that the noise would be just as loud?
If, yeah, it, uh, yeah, it would be the same sound besides the fact that it's in a, a closed building.
Okay. So that is what is this neighbor's concern, and I understand her concern. What, if anything, can we do to alleviate that concern? Um, I'm not sure there is something you can do. I'm gonna, I'm asking the question, but I, I don't have a suggestion.
The, uh, you know, and I, everybody's sounds are different. I've heard the containers get picked up. I, you know, I, I haven't felt that it was offensive, but, you know, yeah, it, I, you know, it just seems as though, um, they come in, they open the gates, they put the machi- you know, their machine picks up the container and then they, they leave with it. And it's a brief period of time. It's, you know, probably 60 seconds. Um, and they would still, you know, coming to the front of the property, they would actually come in, back up, take the container with them, and it would be the same timeframe.
So Colleen, I have a, this is Kristin Kauzner. I have a question. So you mentioned where they are now, and we took a look at them. They're, they're pretty much on the ground now in, in their existing condition, but it seems like in the new building, you're gonna have it higher up. So therefore, when the truck comes, does it have to do less to kind of get, get the dumpster itself on the truck in the new configuration versus the way it is now? And then the follow-up question to that is, you have speed bumps throughout the site, right?
We have what? I'm sorry?
Do you have speed bumps throughout the site?
Speed bumps.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, and I mean, I would, I would assume, I mean, I, I know I've listened to a trash truck go, I mean, a, you know, a garbage truck go over a speed bump and it's pretty loud. Is, is that a sound that might be heard and happening that this, by being in the front and not having to go around the site, might actually be alleviated? Is that something that might be happening?
It, it's a good point. I mean, there definitely is a speed bumps and, and the, um, trash compactor when it comes in, I mean, the, it, it, it is, um, the machinery has, um, a tailgate, for lack of a better word, it has like a lift. So it is possible if, when it goes over the speed bumps, if it, maybe it is extra loud. Um, but they, you know, obviously with the new location, they would just be entering the driveway.
Right.
That, that single speed bump, um, that you saw when we did the walkthrough at the property, um, and so they would go over that and then they would enter.
Okay, um, the speed bumps I know do add a lot of noise. Perhaps that one speed bump of your site could be removed. I don't know if that's possible. It's something I think maybe should be considered. But let me ask, um, this of the neighbor who's on the phone. I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Please forgive me. If, would you feel better about this if A, the speed bump was removed and B, the hours of operations were more restrictive? Are you still there?
I don't think she is on the phone.
Oh, that's bad.
She said it's not the speed bump. It is the, she said it's the dumpster going on the truck.
Okay.
Barbara.
Yes.
This is Ernie. Maybe a point of clarification might help. What, what actually, what actually has to happen is the truck comes with an empty dumpster on it. In order to get the full dumpster on the truck, it has to put the empty one on the ground first. So puts the empty one on the ground.
Sorry.
Am I wrong, Charles?
Uh, yes, no, Charles Myhuck with Brickpoint Properties. That doesn't happen in this instance, actually.
Okay, sorry.
There away, bring that container back. Um, if I could, Colleen?
Two different trucks. Does one come and take it away and another one comes and delivers the new one?
No, it's the same container that comes and goes typically.
I'm sorry, can you explain that?
They take it to the, the dump and they empty it and they bring it back.
And they return. Okay, so for a brief period of time, there is no container there?
Correct, which in the case, in the case of the new facility, where we have that four-foot tall chute, that will house the temporary trash until the new container's back in there.
All right, um, all right, before we, I'm, I'm gonna ask my fellow board members some questions, but first let me see if there's anyone else in the listening audience, any other neighbors or community members that have any questions or comments? Is there anyone else? No, okay. All right, so the question that I have for my fellow board members is, do we feel comfortable moving forward with this? Where we still have this outstanding issue with the neighbor? Or would you like to continue so that we can reach out to this neighbor and have her more involved in the process?
She says she's back on the phone.
Oh, okay. Hello?
I'm here.
I'm gonna still ask my, my board members if this is something they want to move forward, if they feel we need to continue.
Why isn't she on the phone? She got to Monday, she got logged up. Went up.
Who's that speaking?
She says she hears
I'm not sure who's speaking right now, but
I'm on the phone. The trash in the back. The woman who's
I'm on the phone.
Okay, we're hearing multiple voices, so whoever is, um, on the phone, I'm asking everyone to mute themselves except for the neighbor who we asked to call in.
The one that's in the back, it's loud, her whole house gets
I'm on the phone. This is Helen.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Before we continue speaking with the neighbor, I want to get the, the temperature of the board and see if
A lot of crashes in the back.
Okay, I'm gonna ask everyone to mute themselves and I'm gonna call my board. Joe, do you feel comfortable moving forward or would you like to continue?
Well, I think she, I mean, is, correct me if I'm wrong, she's on the phone now, um, that's our only concern would be her, right?
Um, I think so.
Nobody else is really
Yes, I'm hearing multiple people on the phone. I'm not sure who they are.
Yeah. I mean, if she's on the phone, I'd, I'd like to hear from her, but I think, to be honest with you, if, you know, I mean, they, they're gonna have a dumpster.
Yeah.
So there's, it's gonna be a noise. I don't know how you look at it. It's gonna be a noise. It just happens. Um, I think now, my understanding is that noise is gonna be inside a building, or, or is it not? Is, is it gonna, um, where it wasn't inside a building before? Um,
That's my understanding.
I would think that that's gonna muffle it a bit, right? Um, I mean, I, I mean, I'm, I'm only one member here, but if, if we have the person, the only person that's concerned on the phone, maybe we just try to resolve her, her issue to, to the best of our ability and then we move forward.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Jen, what is the, the woman's name? I've forgotten it. I'm sorry. Could you give me her name?
Helen.
Helen, okay. Helen, are you still with us?
Of course, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, we lost you for a little while, so the question that I wanted to ask you is, um, with the understanding that we are hopeful that this would be slightly less noisy at least than before, but there will be a dumpster on the site and there will be some noise associated with it when it is removed, would you, would it alleviate your concerns if there were more restrictive hours when the truck could come and empty the, the dumpster, or is that, would that not satisfy your concerns?
I, I don't know that that makes a difference. As I said, the only issue is, if you're sitting in my house and the dumpster comes, you can hear the crash. When it, it must be when it's picking it up or when it's putting it down, but it's loud enough. And if you're gonna do that and it's closer to my house, it's just gonna be a louder noise. I know they have to have dumpsters. I don't think I've given Beacon Village any hard time about anything. It's just you're moving noise close to me rather than further away.
Right, I understand that.
And I, and not, I, I'm not trying to be unreasonable.
No one is suggesting that you are. Please don't apologize for having valid concerns about your property. That you, you have every right to express those concerns. So, um, I guess my question for the property manager is going to be if we, if they want to reconsider the suggestion that Miss, that member Cavino made to locate this facility, swap the, the location of this facility so that the dumpsters are in the back and the storage is in the front in order to address these noise concerns. Is that something you'd like to consider?
Um, uh, Charles Myhuck with Brickpoint Properties. Um, if that's the discussion at this point, we would probably ask to continue this to the next hearing. Um, we have the dumpsters in the back right now. Probably wouldn't build a building back there just for them. We have a variance for what we have, so it'll stay the way it is most likely.
It's also tricky, um, just, just, uh, this is Kristin Kauzner. It's, um, a little tricky based on the distance required for construction of a structure, um, from the property boundaries. As mentioned, when we were out there, they'd be 50 feet off the property line. Um, the drive around the building is pretty close with the exception of, um, where they have property kind of way up on the hill, um, where the property line's further out, but just, just mentioning property line and, and the, um, side setbacks are gonna be tricky. Um, and I, I don't think you could do just a swap of one to the other. And then the whole speed bump and having the truck going all around the complex is, I think And then the whole speed bump and having the truck going all around the complex has, I think, was witnessed as kinda tricky.
Yes, yes, there were other benefits. Okay, right, um.
I have a quick question, ma'am chair, just based on what the applicant did.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just when you, when you said when the, the truck goes for an hour and then if, since there's no truck, there's no trash container there, you said that the, the trash that people are gonna put there in that period of time stayed in the, in the four-foot-high ramp to the tra, to the trash?
Yes.
So how does that work? So you have the do, you have the door, you open it, it's the ramp down into the compactor?
Correct.
People are gonna take their trash and put it on the ramp?
And it will go down to the bottom, it will go down to the bottom of the ramp, yep.
It goes down to the bottom, which should be the compactor, but what's there now? It's, it's.
It's just a, it's another door that keeps it from going into the compactor. When the compactor.
Oh, okay, so it's a door that keeps it from going to the compactor, okay, okay. And then when the compactor comes back, somebody opens that door, so.
It does, it's, it's an automatic thing, as I understand it. I can get you all the specs on the, uh, equipment.
Okay.
So let me just, I just like, I'm gonna start getting that. So if it's an automatic door, that, is that the door that runs, so when it's down there at the neighbor's house, it's gonna run every three times the, that door, it, till the ramp is open?
Yes, unless the dumpster isn't there, unless the compactor is gone, then it won't run. It can't. Yeah, it's got safety sets that keep it from rushing.
Okay.
The compacting, when we heard it there, was really not very loud. And I think once it's inside a building with some noise attenuation, I'm not really concerned about the, the noise of that. It's more the noise of the delivery and the removal of the dumpsters that I think is problematic.
That would be my concern. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Other board members, would you like to weigh in?
Barbara, this is Paul. I unfortunately was unable, I do call, thank you, but I was unable to be at the walk-around and so forth. But I do know, I remember we had this down on the market shaft at, uh, uh, property sometime ago off Muller Road. And when those things are dumped off the truck at five o'clock in the morning, or whenever it is, they make a loud noise. And I don't, the only solution I could think of, but there's, there's nowhere to do that, I guess, is to have it at a different location. Because the, the, the problem is location that close to the house. Fortunately, it's only once every couple of weeks or so, as opposed to, I thought that it was probably more frequent than that. But I don't know if postponia, uh, there's any potential solution. And, you know, we're just pushing it back another two weeks.
Yes, I think you're right. Thank you, Paul. Um, so I'd like to, yes?
Madam Chair, this is Ernie again. Uh, since it was my suggestion to look at the back of, uh, putting it in, in the same place it is now, but in a building, I, I did not consider the fact that the speed bumps are there. When that, when that co, comes back with the empty, empty dumpster, it is going to make a, I think, it will make a lot of noise going over the speed bumps. And I'm wondering if that's the noise this neighbor is actually hearing? Rather than, because it's way in the back there with, uh, some buildings, yeah, some buildings in between. Is maybe she hearing the noise of it going over the speed bumps? And, and so I, I would pull back on my suggestion that the, that the building for the dumpsters be in the back just because of that and the safety consideration that, uh, these trucks have to, would have to go all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. I wonder the same thing. I know Helen said she did not think it had to do with the speed bumps, but it is pretty far away from that property right now.
I wonder if we can actually get a sense of what the sound is, you know? If I'm fifty feet away at the back dumpsters when they're trading off the, uh, off, off the containers. I wonder if, you know, you can say the next time it's coming is on this date. And I'll be there around eight thirty in the morning, so I'll stand fifty feet away and see what it sounds like. Is something we can schedule?
I don't know, Bill. That's an interesting idea.
Cause I'm, I'm really not comfortable with it, with, you know, as you said, it's, it's, there's gonna be truck sounds that she's not gonna have today. You know, that are gonna be, you know, she can be there with us, I think would be great to say, will you sell fifty feet away? You know, maybe think of it buffering a little bit in the house, but maybe not, cause you're gonna open up the garage door and it's gonna be, you know, the trucks are gonna be hauling it in and out, so. It's really not gonna be buffering too much. The, the noise where compacts will be buffered. And, uh, that was more quiet than I thought it would, but I, I, I think the issue here is the truck, so. Is that something we can schedule with the, with, with the applicant and their, and their waste management team?
Ma'am Chair, this is Mike. I'm looking at the Facebook feed. She's saying it is when it's the dumpster picking up. It's not, she's claiming it's not the, uh, speed bumps, so I just want you to put that, add that.
Yes, that's what she said.
Yeah. And she said she wouldn't be amenable to, uh, coming to that sound test.
So let's hear from the property manager. Is that something that can be arranged?
She doesn't wanna talk on the phone. She's talking to people on Facebook.
Ma'am Chair, I don't know if Colleen's on the line or not. Uh, this is Charles Myhuck again. Colleen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, hi.
Can we remain that with the?
Thinking about it and.
Okay, you know what? I think, you know, we, we have to be cognizant of the time. And I think that we have at least a couple of board members that are on the fence about this. So I'm gonna suggest that we continue this to our next meeting. And in the meantime, we can ask the, the applicant to work with our staff to either arrange for what Bill suggested so that we can be present and hear how loud this is, or perhaps to explore other ways that we can attenuate the noise. So, um, I would like to suggest that we continue this matter to our next meeting. Do I hear any objections to that? Okay, then I'm gonna ask for a motion to that.
I miss the motion. We continue this matter to our next meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Liz Mentry. I'm back.
Oh, hi.
I'm gonna do a roll call. Yep, I called in. So, um, so to continue this matter, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impenba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Bill, I think you're on mute.
Member Gaffney. Member Esteho.
Yes.
And Member Daphne, yes, okay.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, so I think that for the, for the folks at Beacon Village, if you can get in contact with our staff, um, say first thing next week, maybe we can start working on some alternatives or some, try and find some ways to attenuate the noise or have some sort of task put together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Charles Myhuck will take care of that.
Okay, so I'm trying to see, is our next?
Page thirty.
Page thirty, I thought so, okay. So I am looking for a motion to takes, uh, take items seven I, J, K, L, and M together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impenba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item seven I is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section twelve point one point five, PDD Special Permit of zoning bylaws, thirty-one to thirty-seven North Avenue. Digital Alloys Incorporated is the applicant. Item seven Z is a public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to section one point five point one, light manufacturing or processing plants of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw, thirty-one to seventy-seven North Avenue, Digital Alloys, is the applicant. Item seven K is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point two. Laboratories engage in research, experimental, and testing activities included but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section eight point three point seven point four of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw, thirty-one to thirty-seven North Avenue, Digital Alloys is the applicant. Item seven L is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section one point five point four. Hazardous, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw, thirty-one to thirty-seven North Avenue, Digital Alloys is the applicant. And finally, item seven M is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator of the Northwest Park Plan Development District Bylaw, thirty-one to thirty-seven North Avenue, Digital Alloys Incorporated is the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
That's a mouthful. So who is here representing Digital Alloys tonight?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Dan Girard from thirty-seven North Ave.
Welcome, Dan. Okay, um, we have, you have to appear before us, before this. Um, Kristen, if you could give us a very brief summary, we can move forward, I think.
Sure, so, um, as discussed, I think we have still a lot of call-in users that are not muted. Um, as discussed, this is another additive manufacturing company, Northwest Park, with our, uh, cluster that we have developed here. They use, they don't use, um, metal powders. They use metal coils. So it's a little bit different in terms of the storage concerns we had for some others. Um, we went through it, um, last week, so if you have any questions for the applicant, feel free to ask. We have had a couple of meetings with departments. All of the departments are favorable. The Board of Health has C comments because it is a R and D, um, kind of lab use, which they have standard comments, um, around that, which are all, of course, incorporated into the decision. Um, other than that, we are excited about this new company. We're glad they came through permitting. It looks like a lot of special permits, but this, these types of users just have a lot of special permits. Um, so we don't have any concerns and would recommend moving forward and have a draft, um, special permit decision prepared for you. You're on mute.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I know. You're back on mute.
I'm not sure what's happening. It's, are you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Brady, can you unmute Barbara?
I can hear a thumping, Kristen.
All right, can anybody hear me?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you. It's me.
Okay, oh, all right, okay. So, as we said, um, Digital Alloys has been here before us. I wanna give Dan a chance if there's anything new that he wants to present tonight that was not presented previously before I ask the board members if they have any questions. Dan?
Sure, um, actually, you know, I spoke to the CEO just to get more insight as to why they chose Burlington, because that was one question you asked me. Um, and the CEO told me that basically it was, it was central to employees, but, um, the amenities and the fact that you had space available for what we were trying to do was, you know, there, there aren't many, um, towns around that have this kind of space. And, and he loves the park, so.
Well, that's, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I'm gonna see if our board members have any additional questions that haven't been raised previously. Um, does anyone want to speak up? I'm not gonna poll everyone because we have discussed this before. Anyone? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone in the listening audience that would have a question or a comment they'd like to make on this matter before we vote. All right, it looks like we're ready to move forward.
Are you looking for a motion?
We are looking for a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Yes.
Are you ready to close the public hearing? If you pardon me, just make this comment. I wish I knew enough about this to, uh, ask an intelligent question. I'm just gonna say yes on this one.
All right, I think Paul has made a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impenba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Okay, now I'm looking for the, the actual motion. It is on page thirty-one.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna get my glasses up here. Uh, motion to re-approve the request of Digital Alloys Incorporated for special permit pursuant to section one point five more, uh, point one, light manufacturing or processing plant, section one point five point two. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities including but not limited to the fields of biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics, subject to the planning board making the findings set forth in section eight point three point seven point four of the zoning bylaws and subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health, section one point five point four. Hazardous, toxic, and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, and discharge. And section one point five point five, uh, the, good generation of storage, uh, one point five, uh, generation and storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes, uh, classified as very small quality generator of the Northwest Park PDD zoning provisions and bylaws in section twelve point one point five, PDD Special Permit of the zoning bylaws to allow for the operation of a metal additive manufacturing process and storage of materials at thirty-one thirty-seven North Avenue in the Northwest Park Plan Development District and Water Resource Districts, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impenba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to take seven in, in, and seven Q, or seven O, together for discussion purposes.
Welcome to Burlington.
Could we have a second?
Good luck, Dan, welcome.
Um, we have a motion to take items N and O together. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impenba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Item seven N is an application for approval of amend to subdivision, sub, excuse me, a deputitive subdivision called two hundred, four hundred, and six hundred Summit and a deputized company is the applicant. And item seven O is an application for approval of a minor engineering change, seven hundred, four hundred, and six hundred Summit Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Brinkstein. I have this evening with me Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez Company. As you will recall, we were here the last meeting to have the preliminary subdivision approved, uh, which the board, uh, did do. The definitive before you is, uh, is the same as the preliminary. Uh, we had to file a preliminary, as I indicated at the prior hearing, because the regulations and the statutes require that on a commercial subdivision, you file a preliminary first. But, uh, they are the same. The only, uh, change, just to refresh the board's recollection, is we're changing the, the, uh, radius of the existing cul, uh, the cul-de-sac, uh, shown on the plans. It is not built. We're not proposing to build it. Uh, it's the yellow shaded area on the plan before the, uh, the board right now. This allows us to create lot three hundred and to effectuate, uh, hopefully, uh, attracting any, a, uh, a life-size user to the town of Burlington. Uh, we will be, uh, before the board shortly with hopefully a plan to show what we would be proposing to build. Uh, and the minor engineering change is nothing more to, uh, con- conform the other lots to what is happening here because this lot is being spun off of an existing lot. So obviously, the ratios on the prior lots changed, so we want to make everything conform. And I would welcome any questions you may have. Hello?
All right. The mute button is not loading up when I'm on mute or not. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you go. Yep.
Okay. All right, it doesn't seem to be working correctly, but okay, you can hear me now. Thank you. Thank you. Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't have anything. Going through a preliminary for something that's minor, I think we talked about most everything already.
Yes, okay, thank you. Board members, does anybody have any questions they want to ask?
This motion on seven N, definitive subdivision, motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Well, wait a second. I don't know yet if we have, is there anyone that wants to talk first? Anybody from the board?
No.
Okay, anyone in the listening audience that would like to ask a question or make a comment? All right, go for it, Paul.
Okay, this is seven N, definitive subdivision, to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second. Second.
Chairman Larue.
Saying that the helicopter couldn't fly and that the Secret Service wouldn't drive in there. Neither claim was true. Truck for
I'm sorry, who's talking? Who's talking?
Nope, I apologize. My TV automatically came on.
Okay.
I wanted to see if the Celtics won.
Okay, no problem.
This is Liz. I'm doing roll call. So Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Okay, that was to close the public hearing. Now we need the actual
You want the motion?
Yes, please.
Pursuant to section two point five of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land pursuant to M G L, Chapter forty-one, section eighty-one, I have the planning board hereby considers the following waivers requested by the applicant from the subdivision rules and regulations, including a waiver of centerline profile for all pro streets and ways, and a waiver of the construction of a roadway for the plan entitled Burlington Summit, two hundred, four hundred, and six hundred Summit Drive, Burlington, Massachusetts, submitted by the Gutierrez Company on July eighth, twenty twenty. Said plan prepared by Sims, Manny, and McGee Associates dated July eighth, twenty twenty, consisting of nine sheets, which I'm not going to read.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Second.
We'll call again.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yeah.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Okay, now you have a motion at the end of page thirty-three, pursuant to section two point four.
To approve? Are we on the motion on page thirty-one?
Thirty-three.
The end of page thirty-three, pursuant to section two point four.
I was even got to page thirty-three.
Did someone else jump in for Paul, please?
Yes, would they, because I dropped my pages.
Motion to pursue section two point four, the planning for subdivision rules and regs. The planning board hereby finds a definitive subdivision plan application submitted by Gutierrez Company to reconfigure the existing lot lines associated with two hundred, six hundred Summit Drive to create additional frontages supporting the configured lots to be complete in proper submission.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes. All right, Paul, I'll take this one. Motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan entitled Burlington Summit, two hundred, four hundred, six hundred Summit Drive, Burlington, Massachusetts, by the Gutierrez Company on July eighth, twenty twenty. Said plan prepared by Sims, Manny, and McGee Associates dated July eighth, twenty twenty, consisting of nine sheets to be revised in conditions herein reflecting configuration of existing lot lines associated with the two hundred to six hundred summit to create additional frontages supporting newly configured lots and subject to the following terms or vision and conditions.
So here's, thank you.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Page thirty-five.
Oh, well, you're right, page, there you go.
In the question.
To approve the request for approval of minor engineering change for property located at four hundred Summit Drive to update municipal records to reflect current zoning compliance as it relates to dimensional and parking requirements as reflected on the redlined site plan entitled Burlington Summit, six hundred Summit Drive, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Sims, Manny, and McGee Associates dated July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
Second.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I didn't turn the page and see there was a continuation of that, so I'll read it just for the record. The application on our property owner shall revise and submit all site plans, my law, and one paper copy of the site plan for endorsement by the planning board within two weeks of this approval. Upon endorsement of the record, recorded site plan, my law by the planning board, the applicant shall pick up the site plan, my law, and make two-page a paper copy print of the site plan and the PDF copy and the return of all items, including the original my law, within two weeks of such endorsement.
Okay, thank you. We don't need to vote up, right?
The end.
No.
Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday and please, everyone stay healthy.
Yes, thank you all. Thank you for this. And I will add that we hope to be working quickly to be back in front of you as soon as possible and look forward to bringing some more life science to the town, so hope to see you again soon. Enjoy the long weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And Bob, the Celtics lost.
Did they, really?
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, everybody. So moving on, folks, we have minutes to, we have minutes to vote on, minutes of July eighteenth and July sixteenth. Is there anyone who cannot vote on either of these, or can we take them together? Great, let's take them.
I can't, I wasn't present for one of them.
For which one? July?
July, July, yep.
So then let's just take first, Will, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Standing.
Member Clerk Esteho.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
She whipped it up on you there. Keep me on your toes.
I gotta pay attention.
Yes.
Okay, member Covino.
Yes, yes.
Okay, member Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Now looking for July sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of July sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Member Clerk Esteho. Oh, sorry, number Clerk Raymond.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, everybody.
Barbara, I'm sorry, Barbara, I'm sorry.
Yes.
But I thought that was, I thought it was the other way around. I thought you, that was the wrong meeting. I could have abstained from the first one, and that was, that was the June meeting.
Okay, but, okay, we're all set. Don't worry about it. Okay, I think I have any other matters. Are there any other board members that have another matter they want to bring forward before we close out this meeting?
Just, just a quick one, Madam Chair.
Please.
So I was just driving down those external bike the other night and going past the mall. And it appeared to be one of those, they had some pretty bright green lights that were coming off the front of it, architectural lighting. I wasn't able to see what that was, but I wonder if anybody else has seen that. I think it's right next to Frank Pepe's.
It was around Frank Pepe's?
Yeah, it's around Frank Pepe's, yeah.
I don't know what that is.
I'll have to get back there, check out which one it was, but it was straight, you know, cruising down those external bike. I just, I was driving, so I couldn't really turn my head and take a long look at it. But I could see kind of some green lights out, out to the right.
I'm not sure. If any of you are in town, we're not in town as much in the dark because we're not in town at the, you know, doing night meetings. So if any of you want to pull into the mall and snap a picture, that would be helpful. If you're driving around.
I don't get out much anyway, so I'll try to get some fresh air. If you don't, I'm telling you, I'm here almost there the whole day, all night.
I see you citizens don't get out after dark, so.
Bring a flashlight for you, Paul. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. One other little nitpicky thing, we've kind of been looking the other way for quite a while while the Cookie Monster truck is taking up four or five parking spots by placing itself right, you know, horizontal against Mall Road. I think it's time they move that because they're not allowed to use their truck as a sign and block off that many parking spots. If we could have somebody reach out to them and ask them to move that truck, I think it's, it's time. We looked the other way for quite a while, though. Okay?
Yep.
All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
It's not even nine thirty, I have to, oh, okay.
Great job, guys.
Chairman Larue. Do we have to do roll call, please? Chairman Larue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Esteho.
Yes.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Great job, guys.